Roll call.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Hall?
Here.
Commissioner Street?
Here.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Present.
Mayor Anderson?
Present. Item number three, prayer and pledge. Mr. Butler, would you?
Same. Lord, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business. Got our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to call a point of order. As we are, have adopted the Roberts Rules of Order, anytime we vote, aye will be yes and nay will be no. Those will be the responses. And if you would like to speak during the meeting, please address the chair and be recognized before you speak. Thank you. Item number four, approval of agenda and executive session announcements.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, I would like to see if we could add an item to the new business regarding the zoning ordinance draft for more public involvement. I would like to actually have a discussion if we could.
Commissioner Street, I've spoken with the mayor and staff today, and my recommendation, I think, is going to be that this board consider putting out an RFQ to hire a consultant to look at what's been prepared, make recommendations, and take the zoning ordinance from there. There's various reasons for that, and I can get into it if you want to. But I think that would be the most appropriate way to handle the zoning ordinance. I understand your position regarding public engagement. I think that's very important. I do think Fairview and the size that Fairview is with its issues regarding growth really needs to button up its zoning ordinance, and the best way to do that would be with a consultant who prepares zoning ordinances professionally. And so I don't know if that... And the reason why I'm mentioning it now is because if we have a conversation about public engagement, and I think we need to at some point, but I think we're probably ways away from adopting the zoning ordinance because my recommendation is that it be taken off the agenda for voting in the near future until some of these issues are settled. And so the conversation may be premature is why I'm stating that.
So when is the zoning ordinance due to be changed or updated? When's the final on that?
I think staff was charged by the former city administrator to prepare the zoning ordinance amendments. That zoning ordinance and staff have done a really good job with what they had. But staff are not professional zoning ordinance preparers. I'm not. The former city attorney was not. That is something that's best left to people that do that for a living, preparing zoning ordinances. Because the people that do it work with many, many cities and not just one individually. So they're aware of best practices and things of that nature. So at this point, I don't think the zoning ordinance, as it's been prepared so far, is going to be on any voting agenda anytime soon. Because what I'm going to request that the city look into and have with Mr. Doherty, your city manager, is investigating, doing an RFQ, a request for qualifications. So this board can speak to consultants that prepare zoning ordinances and then hopefully choose one and give them a budget to prepare it.
So are we going to be able to have like a workshop or something where we can let our citizens be heard about the certain things?
I would expect in that process, there would be many, many workshops, not only with this board, but with the planning commission, with staff, and with citizens. All the stakeholders.
Okay. I just make sure citizens are involved.
I think that's a good point that you've raised, and I think that's a very important part when you adopt a new zoning ordinance. I think it's a very important part of even discussing what should be in the new zoning ordinance is citizen engagement. And I think that's something that a consultant, again, who professionally prepares zoning ordinances, can do and will do is part of that.
Okay, so when, if y'all decide on the consulting, are you going to let us know that you've found someone so we at least know where the process is?
So staff and myself would not, would not select that consultant. What would happen is the Board of Commissioners would authorize Mr. Doherty to do a request for qualifications, which is called an RFQ or a process like that. He would work with MTAS in order to send it to known consultants so they can make a pitch to the city about why they should be picked. And ultimately, this board would pick that consultant. And then that consultant would work with the city to schedule meetings with this board, with the planning commission, with staff, with citizens, with members of the development community, all the stakeholders, to have those conversations and ultimately end up with a zoning ordinance that not only is easy to read, but easy to use, easy to administer, and treats everybody equally.
Perfect. That's what I need to hear, so.
So the reason why I mention it now, though, is because your request, I think, may be premature because I think we're probably headed in a different direction on the zoning ordinance now. And perhaps Mr. Doherty may want to address that, or Mr. Sullivan. But I think those were the conversations that staff had today. Mr. Doherty's already spoken to MTAS and your MTAS consultant about that. And I think he's guiding Mr. Doherty to make those, start that process.
Okay, so I'm good.
Okay. So with that being said, item 11B, should that be deferred or should that be heard now?
Well, it looks to me like B has to do with fee structure for permits and fees related to construction remodeling. I think this has to do with your present zoning ordinance, and your present zoning ordinance will remain your zoning ordinance until there's a new one to replace it. And I think the process I've laid out will probably take a year or more to accomplish in the right way. So I would think 11B, unless staff says otherwise, is ripe for hearing tonight and discussion when we get to it. But I'd leave that to sponsor, which was, I think, Mr. Sullivan. But it sounds like it still needs to be on the agenda.
Mr. Sullivan?
That was separate from the zoning ordinance. We, back in 2019, approved a fee structure. Spoke then that it would be something that we would look at every few years. I know there've been a couple of comments with that needing more information. So if it's your will to remove that tonight, we can take that off. I can have more information in the future that I've already heard some that's needed. So that would be to the pleasure of the board if you want to remove that tonight or have those discussions.
I'll go ahead and tell you, Mayor, I was going to make a motion to defer.
Well, point of order, we probably need to handle that when we get to it, since we've already adopted the agenda. So I believe, haven't we? Okay, so that would be, you could make a motion to defer before, or a motion to defer or table it?
Or he can withdraw it.
Or he can withdraw it. Yes, sir.
I'll withdraw it and get you all more information for probably first meeting in March.
Thank you. So we will be removing item 11B from the agenda.
Mayor, if I could just make a quick note, I think that was stimulated from the discussions during the Parks Operational Plan that was created to try and allocate some of the building permit funds to go towards parks. So I think that's what kind of pushed or drove that initial discussion of 11B, just for reference or background.
Is any part of 11B a fee structure for the parks?
Yes, ma'am, it was. I'm fine either way discussing it tonight, and we can get to that and keep it on, or we can remove it. But I'm just saying, I think that's what stimulated and kind of pushed that application was our discussions during the Parks Operational Plan that we've engaged an engineer with to try and stimulate some revenue to go commit towards parks for some of those projects that are going to come from that Parks Operation Plan.
Myself, I don't want to wait on that one. Just because of the funding going towards the park.
Mayor, Mr. Sullivan, would that, if we went forward with it, would that contribute funds to the park now or would it wait till budget time?
The way it's written tonight, there's an ordinance that would change the fee structure for building permits that would have fees that, once adopted, and I believe it would be a second reading with a public hearing with it being a fee structure, is that correct? At that point, and then once it is considered a standard for that process, it would go ahead and start then. But with the request to have it removed, I can get more information for next month, have all of that ready, have any of the information about the park and so forth then as well. So either way. Thank you.
Mayor, if the mayor pleases, if, tonight is just first reading. So you could have the item on the agenda, if the will of the board is to pass it on first reading. That would allow Mr. Sullivan to get some additional information and bring it to second reading. At that point, it would need to be approved second reading in order to become law or ordinance. And so I don't think that there's any harm in having first reading tonight because you'll still have another chance to vote on it in a month.
Okay, so I have a first and a second for the agenda as is. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Street?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item number five, public hearings. There are none tonight. Item number six, citizens' comments.
We have four tonight. The first one is Mr. Jeff Pape.
And I would like to remind everyone to please be courteous and respectful when approaching and doing your citizens' comments, please.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Jeff Pape, 7114 Elrod Road, Fairview. I'm going to change things up about what I was going to say because it was all about public participation, but y'all threw me a curveball. I could never hit curveballs when I played baseball, but I'm going to try it tonight. So what I'll say is, it was brought up at the last meeting by Commissioner Street, and we actually had a meeting this Saturday at the rec center with about 20 to 25 citizens. And that's definitely top of mind. It's definitely something that people are focused on. And I just was going to ask for a show of hands of everybody who supports additional public participation. If I can get everybody to kind of raise their hands there, just so you could see the effort that the citizens are putting into doing this. I was originally going to talk about an email I sent you all after the last meeting with very specific recommendations on how to add kind of three different pieces of public participation. But hearing what's going to happen with the zoning code, those are all changes to the zoning code. And I think you all know I do this for a living. I'm a developer. I've been standing in front of boards like this for 30 years and read I don't know how many zoning codes. What I would say is, everything I just heard about the process that's going to move forward, I know the staff's been working really hard at this. But we are at a situation where Fairview's, you know, we're going to grow. There's going to be a lot of growth. Nashville is still number one in the Urban Lands Institute's top growth city in the country for the second year in a row. So we're going to have growth. And I think the city attorney is right on the money that a professional consultant will help just clean up the ordinance. You know, everything the staff has done to add has been a great job, and there's some great public participation that can be added. But I won't get into that detail because I think I've participated in those processes. I think that consultant will come in, they will hold workshops, they will get everybody involved, and they'll come up with a great ordinance. So I look forward to participating in that. I encourage you all to do that and move forward with that and look forward to participating in that. And, you know, obviously, this isn't going to be acted on tonight. I'm glad to meet with all of you individually to just talk about my experiences in the last 30 years, being involved in public participation from the developer side and what we expect. And it's okay to ask developers to have public participation. We do it all the time. It happens everywhere. And, you know, so there's no reason not to do that. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next is Ms. Tiffany Wilson Mobley.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Wilson Mobley. I live at 7303 Cox Run Court in Fairview. Thank you for letting me talk and just share, continue to share. A few weeks ago, and I had forwarded to you all, we had a survey that I had put in the paper just to get some information from citizens and then wanted to share it with you all, and also had said that I was going to be sharing that to the public. So I wanted to make sure. And sir, welcome to Fairview. I just, I do appreciate you having someone come in and look at that draft zoning because that is a huge part of what people are trying to ask for. And I'm just going to read what they said. Again, I'm just going to keep coming back because there are so many amazing comments. What I am a little concerned about with the year, taking that year to have a consultant, that makes me wonder if there are going to be a hold on developments coming forward. So, because this seems to be the biggest problem, is that we do not have an opportunity to have the public participate. And waiting a full year, I would hope that we could put things on hold because right now, the public participates, but not until that public hearing, which is after the second reading. There are easy ways that that can change. I say easy, non-charter ways that that could change. And so that makes me think, oh, let's hold right now because we're not going to be able to get the public's input. And I also appreciate you, sir, saying that's a way to get equal participation from all the stakeholders. I think that's right in line with people are saying. The second question was, what information do citizens want to be able to give, planning and BOC? And what do they want planning and BOC to do with that input? Here are some examples of the comments that came in. Just pause me when I'm up to three. "Any and all concerns about conflicts of interest on the part of officials, traffic, roads, flooding, crowded classrooms, lack of sewer, and stress on water availability. Any and all other environmental impacts. Listen to decide development. Money is not everything, and the town is small. It's not too much to consider the opinion of those that have to live here." They need to know how the citizens, how, sorry. They need to know how the decisions will impact their citizens. Citizens should be able to advise how any changes will impact their lives and concerns over money spent, as is their tax dollars. The planning and BOC should take all information into consideration before making any decisions. Understand the impact that more houses and more people will have on the quality of life in Fairview. Please understand that developers aren't marketing to citizens that are already here, but to people moving from California. These are the only ones who can afford to pay $500, $600, $700, $800,000 for new homes. This is not a motion. Look up the statistics on average wages earned in Tennessee versus California and do the math. How development would impact day-to-day lives in their neighborhood, traffic, water runoff, noise. The BOC is sworn to answer to its constituents. Should consider their input when making decisions. Make developers pay for traffic lights and turn lane improvements. Please consider all sides and the impact on the land and neighbors surrounding areas, impact on resources, especially here in this small town, like roads, schools, et cetera. Citizens should be privy to the proposals when they are scheduled for board discussion, and there should be a discussion before any vote, like a meeting ahead of scheduled vote so board actually has time to reflect and research citizen concerns to ensure all plans meet requirements and town need. Not every proposal is good, yet they all seem to push through, and all seem to be housing aside from a single entertainment, sports facility, and a single car wash. Not everything that generates growth or even money is positive. Shall I stop? Okay, thank you very much. I'll keep on next time. I appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Tim Mangrum.
Good evening. Tim Mangrum, 7326 Fernville Road. The city attorney took most of my spiel because it was zoning ordinance-related. But I do have one concern. There was an email sent out a couple of days ago that sort of would lead people to believe that decisions are being made by electronic forms. And the Tennessee Open Meetings Act declares that the formation of public policy and public business must be transacted transparently and not in secret. So I would like to see that enforced. But I was delighted to hear that we will have some open participation from all the stakeholders. And in those meetings, I hope it's not one-sided affair. I'd love to get the developers, because I do think there's opportunities there for the neighbors and the developer to set out. I've done it in Nashville several times because they require it there. It just has to be in an orderly manner to where everybody can communicate, get along, and have good, open discussion. So like I said, he took most of my spiel, so that's all from me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last tonight is Susan Morrison.
Susan Morrison, 7250 Northwest Highway. I don't have a lot of notes or facts or details, but, so I'm going to ad lib a little bit. Got a new full board, got new attorney, city manager. We've got a whole, full staff. So, you know, I'm ready to move forward. You've got a lot of important decisions in front of you that are going to be coming, going to be finalized. And I'm glad to see that we're, you know, rolling along. Come to a lot of meetings and watch them from home a lot of times. And I've seen a lot of developers come and talk about their qualifications, their experience, how good they are at their job, and they will refer to their counsel or their engineer or this or that and the other. And they're good at their job, and they are good at their job. So I was sitting here in one meeting not long ago, and I was thinking, you know, I don't have a counsel. I don't have anyone to bounce my ideas off of. But I'm a longtime member of the community. And when they're talking about they've developed here and there and everywhere, this is my only community. And I think that's when your citizens are talking and among, to you and your emails and everything, this is our only community. I don't have another one. And I think we are all on the same page. We all want Fairview to grow and be prosperous. We want to be welcoming. We want the same thing. I mean, I think we're all reasonable people. We want controlled growth. I do have some fear over some of the development. I fear that I'm not going to be able to get out of my driveway or get to my mailbox, you know? But just be aware of that, you know? And I see it in Nashville. Read the papers. It's the same thing. Developers are your residents. Developers are your residents. Who are you accountable for? You know? So you've got a lot of decisions. We're behind you. We want to work with you. And just, I think we're all on the same page. We can work together. I think that's all I had.
Thank you.
I think I'm done.
That's all for tonight.
Thank you. Item number seven, public announcements, awards, and recognitions.
Thank you, Mayor Commission. Our community relations coordinator, Richard Ross, asked me to announce that he is accepting vendor applications for the Arts and Crafts Fair scheduled for Saturday, May 13. And he is also accepting sponsor applications for the July 3 event. He can, if you're interested, whether you're an individual or a business, you can reach Richard at 615-387-6140. Thank you.
Item number eight, staff comments and monthly reports. A planning report.
Board Commission, thank you all for letting me come in tonight. For January, we issued 12 permits. Still a little bit slow getting through winter. Looking at some reports, I think that housing will pick up a little bit soon. Seeing some interest rates changing a little bit, maybe we'll see a few more permits being issued, but still fairly low. Historically, we've been the 20 to 30 range per month in the last several years. So hoping that picks back up in a little bit. We do have the Planning Commission meeting for February on the 14th of next month. All of you are invited to be there. And then the agenda for that has been included with your packet tonight. There is a 6 o'clock joint BOC, PC, and Boza work session. Ask that you all can come to that if you're able to. I know it's Valentine's night, but if y'all can spend a little bit of time with us, we'll get you some heart candies or something. But hoping to get a little bit of discussion in there on meetings and how we're going to conduct some things with meetings and so forth, similar to how some discussion was tonight with Roberts Rules. Hoping to introduce some of that and then just getting some things cleaned up. So I hope that everybody can be there for that. The next slide, it's part planning, part parks, mainly parks, but we're helping out with them. We are doing the Parks Master Plan. Keith is doing a great job with that. But we have a public input meeting that is on February 28. That is going to be at City Hall. So it will be in here. We'll have tables and chairs set up for that. We're going to have two different presentations that will be given. There'll be a presentation at 5 o'clock and a presentation at 6:30. They will be the same presentation given by the team. But what we wanted to do is make sure that we had time all afternoon and into the evening for families to come in. I know we've got younger and older crowds that want to be a part of that public input, trying to be aware of kids, dinnertime, getting out of school. So we wanted to make sure we had two opportunities for everybody to come through. So 5 and 6:30, there'll be given that presentation. And then we will work from there. Top corner says that we're at the public input, and then we have three more stages to go. And I'm thinking they're talking probably mid, mid to early summer on when that plan will be out. I don't want to hold them to a timeline, but they're eager, we're eager, and everybody's looking forward to getting that moving forward. So I think that's all I had for planning. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Item 8B, finance report.
Thank you. I've given you the copy of the bank accounts as of today. The, our primary operating account is the first number, the first one listed. If you go down to the GF Capital, that is the ARPA funds. And if you go to the next page, that is the balance of the bond funds. And the last page is our reserve account. Hopefully, we're still looking to fill the finance director position. If, hopefully, as soon as we can get our feet under us, and our reports will resume. But as of right now, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out. That's my finance report. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Item 8C, Public Works.
Give me just a second to find it. Hold on. Thank you. I'm going to combine Public Works and City Manager Report. I really want to just commend the Public Works guys for their spreading the salt before our ICE event here the last couple of days ago. It was a crew of two. They spread almost 12 and 1/2 tons of salt. And also, I'm glad to report that there were no accidents reported in the City of Fairview during that time. So I just really appreciate them getting out. I think they're out past 1:00 in the morning doing that. Also, I want to say the initial trash pickup on Highway 100 and Highway 96 has been completed. They're going to try to keep that up throughout the year. Leaf pickup is still underway. If you have your bags, just put them out there, and they'll come by and pick them up. Chipper service will begin on April 1. Moving into some City Manager items, we've already talked about the zoning ordinance. I will get underway quickly on RFQs. Playground, very excited to announce that the fence materials will be delivered next week. And we are in negotiations with contractors for the fence and the sidewalk. Hopefully, next meeting, we will have a little more to report on that. But I know there's been a lot of questions for that, and I thank you for your patience. Also, next week, the, or next meeting, the auditors will present our audit. And I'm happy to say that another clean audit. And it's, we will get that on the website. And if anybody has any questions on our finances, feel free to give me a call or an email. And that is all I had tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number nine, Consent Agenda. A Minutes from Board of Commissioner Meeting, January 19, 2023.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion?
Yes. I would like to, since certain items happened that night that are on the agenda that were not discussed with everyone, I kind of don't feel we should approve it. Or I, because there's stuff on here that I found out from citizens. And did investigating, and so the agenda is actually not correct from last meeting.
Could you clarify what exactly you're talking about, please, so that we'll know?
Yes. So we are a city manager chartered city. Only an aldermanic, mayor, an aldermanic chartered city can the mayor give oath or swear anyone into office. So that was not proper. And then found out that it was corrected on that next Wednesday.
I did not give the oath as mayor. I gave the oath as a notary public. I did not do that myself. I was told that that was appropriate through the Tennessee Code, which we found out was incorrect. So the oath was re-administered from our city judge.
On Wednesday.
But I was not doing it as the mayor. I was doing it as a notary public. Because I accept oaths as a notary public. And I was instructed that that was okay when we found out that it needed to be done differently. The judge did the swearing in.
Can I speak to clarify?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor. I was sworn in that Thursday night and did participate in the closing of that meeting. The very next morning, I was in Tom's office and had some paperwork to fill out and asked him about getting re-sworn in when Rachel brought the document in for me to sign from the official swearing in. And I asked at that time to be sworn in again because we didn't have a Bible present that night. And the judge had already said that he would swear me in prior to court, which he did. So I'm not sure where that falls. Our attorney can tell us where that falls in on the aspect of the actual minutes that we're approving. But I asked for it before anybody knew it even couldn't be done because I wanted it done again because I wanted my hand on the Bible. And the city manager can attest to that.
And also, I do want to point out that Commissioner Johnson did not participate in any vote at all that night.
Commissioners, Mayor, if I may. As far as the minutes that had been prepared for the last meeting, I think they accurately state what happened. There was an attempt to swear in Commissioner Johnson. I think he found out after the fact. And I confirmed that that swearing in was ineffective because under Tennessee law, while a notary can deliver some oaths, oaths of office are different. And there's only a few people that can deliver oaths of office. Judges, legislators, and others. And so as far as I'm concerned, when I look at those minutes, I think they're accurate, even though the swearing in wasn't effective. But there was an attempt to swear in Commissioner Johnson. So I think, I think the minutes are fine to approve as far as the city attorney is concerned. As far as the swearing in, there is nothing in Tennessee law that says the swearing in has to occur at a meeting or at any special place. I've reviewed those facts. I've contacted MTAAS. We reviewed the law. Mr. Hogan, my associate, and I reviewed the law. And I believe that second swearing in, in fact, was effective and was properly done. It does not need to occur at a public meeting. So I don't, while the swearing in was ineffective, I think reporting that in the minutes that it took place is proper because it did take place. It just was ineffective.
So should the word ineffective be put in there?
No, because they didn't know it was ineffective at the time they did it. So I think it's accurate as far as what happened that evening. And I've confirmed that since that happened, Commissioner Johnson, this has been properly sworn in by our city judge.
Just clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Any other discussion? Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Street.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item 10, Old Business. There is no old business tonight. Item 11, New Business. A Resolution 0-23, a resolution authorizing the city manager to engage a new city attorney. Have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion?
I do have some discussion. Tom, could you, I know we have to have the city attorney, and I'm perfectly fine with that. Can you provide us with a cost analysis of what we have paid Potter for the last two calendar years, please? Don't have to have it tonight.
Sure.
Thank you. That's all.
Any other discussion? Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Street.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item number 12, Communication from the Mayor and Commissioners. Commissioner Hall.
Mayor. Did we strike 11B or did we not?
We did.
Oh, we did. I thought the move.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We decided to go ahead and hear that tonight and it's just a first reading. So item 11B, Ordinance 2023-01, An Ordinance to Amend Title 12 of the City of Fairview Municipal Code, specifically sections related to the city's fees, structure for permits and fees related to construction, remodeling, building permits, and industrial, commercial, and residential development.
Mayor, if I could, I would like to make a-
I need a motion first, please.
I'd like to make a motion. Proper for me to make a motion now?
Yes.
I'm going to make a motion that we defer and that we hold a workshop prior to the first reading. And I do realize that the city attorney has said that we can pass this on first reading and then not pass it on second reading. The previous 16 years I served here, I did not make it a precedent to just pass something that was before us if I had so many questions about it on the front end. I have spoken with Micah prior to the meeting, asked him for several different cost analysis between two cities with an equal demographic size as us, also with each city that resides in our county. Anaheim have, I think that we need that information prior to voting on this as it stands. I will say also that I am in no disagreement whatsoever that this 15% goes to the nature park or goes to the Parks and Recreation Fund. I have, if the previous board decided that, that is perfectly fine. I think we need to see how these fees are being collected, what the differences are in what we currently have and what we're going to. None of that is really provided to us this evening. He did provide me and Commissioner Street right before the meeting with some details of part of the stuff that we do collect. And then there are some miscellaneous fees for residential rental and leased properties and mobile food pantries and food trucks that are supposedly going to be left out of this. And so I've asked each and everything on this two-page document I've given, anything that's going to change, I would like to see what it is changing to versus what it is from before we vote on the first reading.
So your motion is to defer?
Defer and hold a workshop prior to the first reading.
Point of order, it's a motion to defer, postpone until what, until when, Commissioner Johnson? We need to set a date, whether it's 30 days or 60 days.
Unless something major happens, I should be able to have that information by the March 2nd date. That should be one month.
My motion will be the first meeting in March.
Okay. So it's to postpone until March 2nd.
And have a workshop prior to that meeting.
Okay, it's a first.
A second.
So you second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I have a first and a second to defer until March 2nd with a workshop before. Any other discussion? Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Street.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. Item number 12, Communication from the Mayor and Commissioners.
Point of order, Mayor, if you could announce what the vote was. I believe it was 5-0, but I think it's appropriate for the mayor to announce the vote so the citizens are clear that it passed or not and what the vote was.
So just for clarification, how should I, after each item is approved or not?
5-0 approved or 5-0 denied or whatever the vote is.
Thank you. So we have five approved, zero, five to zero approved. Item number 12, Communication from the Mayor and Commissioners. Commissioner Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Carter, I want to welcome you to Fairview. You seem very, very knowledgeable, and I am tickled to death to have someone of your qualifications here. Thank you again. I'd like to clarify a statement that I made at the last meeting regarding a person that was nominated by the city manager for the position of commissioner. After several text messages back and forth with Mr. Collins, I want to apologize. Apparently, I misunderstood the way he proposed it to me several years ago. Anyway, I would like to apologize to him. And the commission was voted on, and absolutely made a great commissioner. I want to thank him for being a commissioner. But I just wanted to clarify that statement that I made the other night and apologize for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher Street.
Again, thank you for the citizens for coming out tonight and, you know, voicing your opinion. And it's nice to meet you, Mr. Carter, and appreciate you being here tonight. And just keep doing what you're doing.
Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome to our new legal team. Glad y'all are here. Glad to have you. I will apologize for the swearing in at the last meeting. And I will say that if we had this new legal team, we probably wouldn't have done that at the last meeting because, like Commissioner Hall said, I think he knows what's going on. I will let the public know that I did speak with County Mayor Rogers Anderson, and he said that I could have driven to Franklin, and he would have sworn me in that night or the next morning at his office. I was already in Tom's office when I made the decision. I had spoken to Judge Crutcher, who was in Indiana at the time, and he said that he would swear me in with my hand on the Bible prior to court the next week. And that's what we did before I knew any of this other stuff. Before I even knew it was invalid, I wanted it done with my hand on the Bible in the first place. So I want to apologize for any concerns that that may have brought to the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Butler.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to everyone for coming out tonight and discussing, and a welcome to Mr. Carter and Mr. Hogan. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out. We do want to hear from you. We want everyone to join together as a group with us and just, you know, make your wishes known because it's very important for us to all work as a team. I want to welcome Mr. Hogan and Mr. Carter. I've been so impressed by the knowledge and experience that they bring, and I believe that it's going to be a good collaboration with all of us to work together. As far as me swearing in, Commissioner Johnson, I was told by several people that as a notary public, Rachel, myself, or Mr. Darty could have done that. That was incorrect. We were not given that information that night, that the way we were doing it was incorrect. So we had no idea. So it's been done correctly now, so I just wanted everybody to know that that was not done out of ill will. We were just given information and, you know, just did what we thought was right. As always, let's keep Fairview beautiful and just pick up trash and not throw out. I do want to mention one thing that I'm looking into that we used to do a while back. Commissioner Johnson was involved in this. I know it's very frustrating for the way things are set up where it's not a dialogue situation, where we listen and we can't respond the way the meetings are set up. So I'm going to, you know, propose that maybe starting, not in March, but the next month that has a fifth Thursday, that we can start maybe holding a town hall. That, we used to do that, what, how long ago? About 15 years ago?
I mean, we were still doing it as far as I can remember in 2016 when I left.
Okay, well.
So we did it, we did it for the four terms I served.
So the way that, the way that would work is members of the board who are available, members of the Planning Commission who are available. The way we did that is citizens could come, and when there's a fifth Thursday, which is usually once a quarter, you know, people could come to City Hall on that night, and it would start at 7:00. And you can, you know, we can dialogue. you know, we can dialogue, answer, question, answer. So, that way, it's not a situation where, you know, we're just doing meetings where we're listening and we can't respond. We could, you know, actually dialogue and get some good information from the public, developers, builders, and just, you know, be a unified group. So, we're gonna look into that, and when we decide, you know, to start implementing that, we'll let everyone know. But I think that will be a good time for us to come together and get the questions answered and concerns that we can address. So, with that, I make a motion, or I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, I'm moving.
We're adjourned. Thank you.